Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, November the first, 2016. At this time, could we rise by an invocation by Councilman Markham Whittington and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Travis Beer?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'm going to call on our very own Fire Chief, Thomas Walker, to give the invocation.
Let us pray. Most loving and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the day. We thank for the blessings you bestowed on us. Most of all, we thank you for your Son who died on the cross. Lord, we thank you so much for the ability to be here, for the grace that you give us to be part of this city. Lord, just thank you. Rain your blessings down on this city as it comes together to take care of the business of the city. And though differences do occur, we ask that your Spirit intervene and that differences be decided in a Christian manner with your love shown in all decisions made. Go with us now through this meeting. Lead, guide, and direct, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. President, I want to introduce Girl Scout Troop 20130 from Tupelo Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church there under the leadership of Mrs. Anita Ambrose. The girls that are here are Diamond Sharp, Pearson Gamberl, Lakin Smith, Danielle Owens, Jamila Hurd, Shay Lynn Martin, and Harmony Hadley. And I'm going to come around and they're going to lead us into play. Attention. Play.
(Singing) I will lead the leaders to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God and the people who live in this land.
This little young lady here is smoking a ball. Wow. Thanks.
And I ask Vice President Markham Whittington to confirm or amend the agenda and agenda order.
Yes, Mr. President, I want to confirm the agenda with one correction on item 7.8. It was a misprint of 12 trees. It should be 25 trees. Other than that, I would like to confirm the agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Whittington and a second by Mr. Mike Bryan. All in favor? The motion, the agenda is confirmed. Item four, Proclamation, Proclamation, Recognition and Reports Agenda. Item 4.1, Recognition of Boy and Girl Scouts. We've already done that. 4.2, Recognition of City Employees, Mayor.
There are none tonight.
Item 4.3, Public Recognitions.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to congratulate some people.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. White.
That's not out of order, right?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to thank everyone for coming. Also, I'd like to recognize all pastors in the House. Would you mind just holding your hand up? All pastors, ministers, and all any elected officials out on the floor, and all of our guests. I welcome you coming in tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I would just like to remind everyone, I got this yesterday, November the 11th, there will be a blood drive at the, wait a second, I'll find out, at the American Legion Post, and it's for a good cause. You can, you can give blood. You can also buy bricks around the flagpole to honor our missing in action, those killed in action, our veterans. And you can also, actually, you can also put in to do some labor around that. So, I would recommend and certainly hope that y'all will come out the 11th. Thank you.
Mr. President, I need to make a correction.
Mr. Sure, go ahead.
I missed Mr. Mayfield. I was looking straight in the face earlier and I apologize for not recognizing you. Any other attorneys in the, in the House? I like to recognize people because when I come to FSTF, they recognize me. So, I apologize for that.
Thank you. Mike? Ms. Natty? Travis? Public Recognizations, Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. At this time, if I could ask Mr. Greg Miley and our other representatives of Waste Management, please come forward. We've got a lot of folks here that don't normally attend council meeting tonight. One of the things we, we like to do each council meeting is recognize our employees, recognize the public recognitions that you heard from Councilman Jennings and Councilman Palmer and others, and also to recognize our community partners. The individuals, the companies, the organizations that partner with the city of Tupelo to make the city of Tupelo a better place, to partner with the city of Tupelo to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens, and to let us fulfill our promise of being an all-American city. One such company that does that, that goes above and beyond each and every day, each and every week, each and every month, each and every year, is Waste Management. They consistently go above and beyond their contract to perform, of course, waste removal and disposal, but they also partner and make many of the events that you go to downtown or other parts of the city possible. Without their partnership, we simply would not be able to afford to do many events that our citizens enjoy. So, at this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, the city of Tupelo, would like to recognize Waste Management for their dedicated partnership with the city of Tupelo and always going above and beyond expectations. Thank you, Greg.
Item 4.4, Proclamation and Recognition, Recognition of Pay It Forward Week, Mayor?
At this time, if I could ask my friends, Kenzie Dixon, Jeffrey Robinson, and Jackson Bridges, please come forward. The Tupelo High School senior projects, they are doing meaningful events that make the city of Tupelo a better place. You see their hard work all over the city. You see murals, you see monuments, you see markers of historic places, you see mentoring classes, you see good, positive things happening. When I graduated high school in 1994, my senior project consisted of basically a research paper. I went and spent about a half a day in the Lee County Library and then went and turned it in. The kids today have to do many, many hours of hard work. They have to have a mentor. The mentor has to sign off on their project and they have to show what they've done. This group has done the Pay It Forward campaign, and now, on behalf of the City Council, the administration, the city of Tupelo, it's my honor and privilege to issue the following proclamation. Whereas the aim of Pay It Forward concept is to promote community spirit through intentional acts of kindness, and the Pay It Forward novel written by Catherine Ryan Hyde in 2000 has inspired the creation of a movie and a movement that has been vital in inspiring millions of good deeds all across the world. Pay It Forward Day is a worldwide effort being supported by people in more than 65 countries. Pay It Forward Day encourages people to do good deeds for others without asking anything in return, except for the recipients pay it forward to others in need. Together, we can make a difference. Together, we can make a difference by creating positive change in our community, one good deed at a time. Therefore, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, I do hereby proclaim the week of October 31st through November 6th, 2016, as Pay It Forward Week in Tupelo, Mississippi, and present Kenzie Dixon, Jeffrey Robinson, and Jackson Bridges with this official proclamation and urge all citizens to observe this day with activities and acts of kindness that demonstrate and celebrate selfless giving. And not, not single Jackson out, but he got signed with Meridian Community College to play baseball today.
Item 4.5, A Proclamation and Recognition of the Week of the Family, Mayor?
If I could ask Ms. Thorndison and, I don't, or anybody else? Are y'all coming up? Okay. Got to be extra nice to her. I don't know if anybody in the audience can see it, but her husband has a boot on my foot. Dr. Thorndison here, so I'm going to be extra nice to her. This time, on behalf of the council, the administration, the city of Tupelo, it's my honor and privilege to issue the following proclamation, saying to the Week of the Family. Whereas the city of Tupelo recognizes that Tupelo is blessed with the multitude of families and a central part of the cultural, social, and spiritual fabric of our community, and Tupelo recognizes strong families are the center of strong communities, whereas everyone has a role to play in making families successful. Whereas during the Week of the Family, Tupelo residents should take the time to honor the importance of families and recognize the special connections that support and strengthen them throughout the year. During this week, Tupelo families can take the opportunity to commit to enhancing and extending all the connections that strengthen and enrich this most valuable institution. Whereas the city of Tupelo will join other citizens, agencies, and organizations throughout Tupelo to honor and celebrate our families. Therefore, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, I do hereby proclaim November 7th through 13th, 2016, as the Week of the Family in Tupelo, Mississippi, and invite all citizens to share in the many festivities prepared for this occasion. Thank you so much.
Item 4.6, A Proclamation and Recognition of Native American Heritage, Mayor?
Councilman Bryan, or President Bryan, the representatives for that one could not be here tonight, so I'd ask that that be moved to the next council.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
President Bryan, if you'll allow me one thing, it's very important, maybe go back to public recognition. My grandson Hayden Palmer sang with ICC baseball today, too, and I had to say that.
At this time, item 4.7, the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Bryan. A couple of quick things. The mentioned 4.6 there being moved to next month, also being moved to next month in the report is a recap of Friday's events, just because it was a good bit of time to go through that, but the historic agreement with the ChickSA Nation, the Connaught Foundation, the National Park Service, and Natchez Trace in the city of Tupelo. We have a Veterans Day program, November 11th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. at Veterans Park, and the Celebration of Hope benefiting regional rehab will be Sunday, November 13th, from 1:30 to 3:30 at the Mall of Barnes Crossing. The remainder of my report will be the slides. I don't know if everyone can see this. The council members should be able to see the slide there on the TV, and everyone else should be able to see the slide behind the council members. They're the same slides. We will try to keep them on pace with one another, but they're, they're the exact same slides. Of course, most everyone here is familiar, the council certainly familiar, of the events that have led up to today's presentation, to tonight's presentation. This is the result of the work of the six working groups that have been meeting since August. Of course, the catalyst for many of these, for these working groups was June 18th of this year, when Mr. Antoine Schumpert was killed as a result of a incident involving Tupelo police officer. So, after that took place, this council, our administration, the different people in the mayor's office, police department, began to meet with the various groups throughout the city of Tupelo. We began to meet with different community leaders, leaders of organizations, concerned citizens, and other people. We conducted a listening tour throughout the city of Tupelo to meet with as many people as we could. The plan to form six working groups was completed on July 26th, 2016, and was presented to the council and approved to go forward on August 9th, 2016. Since that time, the six working groups have worked diligently to form, forge a way forward for a great city. After, and I won't go through this on each and every one of them, sometimes I'll mention it. After tonight, the implementation of all of the recommendations of all six of these committees will go to the Tupelo Accountability Task Force, with some of the recommendations also being aided and assisted by the Mayor's Outreach Task Force. Building trust, of course, there is, I don't think much dispute over the fact that we, in the city of Tupelo, had a breakdown in the level of trust after June 18th of this year. We had that incident, which broke down what was the result, the level of trust that was the result of many, many decades of concentrated effort by city leaders in the city of Tupelo to build trust among every member of our city. You know, going back to the biracial committees, the different groups that have worked throughout the years, including the Mayor's Outreach Task Force that was funded for the first time in the history of the city by the city council. What we want to do as a city is to rebuild that trust. You know, the trust was broken down in many cases. Decades-long friendships were broken after this event. So, what we're trying to do through these groups as a city is to rebuild that trust to let our citizens know we're committed to doing the right thing. As part of this plan, we had, we developed six strategies or pillars that were represented through the six working groups. These working groups were, one, to further develop community-oriented policing programs; two, to establish Police Advisory Board; to review the hiring and training policies of the city of Tupelo; to strengthen our neighborhood associations; to engage faith-based groups for help; and to hire a community outreach facilitator, coordinator position. As I mentioned, we did open meetings, we did private meetings, we met with different groups, we had individual meetings almost daily to form these groups and get a better understanding of the issues that were important to rebuild that trust. Each of these six groups have already presented their reports and recommendation to the city council during work sessions. Tonight's presentation is a recap of these presentations, which will be reflected in the minutes of the city of Tupelo. Strategy one was to further develop community-oriented policing. Almost immediately after June 18th, there were very loud and vocal calls for the city of Tupelo to undertake community-oriented policing. That's something that for decades has been a priority for the Tupelo Police Department. And we conduct hundreds of events over the past three years. Several hundred community-oriented policing events have taken place. But what we learned is that if there's a perceived problem, there's a real problem. If we're doing these events and the citizens don't know that we're doing these events, then we're not living up to our full potential and not doing everything that we should. So, we met, the working group issued the following recommendations. To create a web-based public forum for the city and each division to address needs or concerns. To reinstitute Coffee with Cops program and other community-oriented programs to increase police visibility. I mentioned earlier the number of events that we're doing. Again, we're doing these events, but if our citizens don't know we're doing them, then we've got to do a better job. So, we're going to create brochures and other web-based, social media-based platforms to let the citizens know when and where these events, community-oriented policing activities and events are taking place, so that we get the maximum benefit of those. We're going to reinstate the bike patrol with police officers being visible to the community. Now, this will not be a full-time, not likely to be a full-time bike patrol, but probably for special events, special occasions, you know, different times as deemed necessary through our police department to do that. So, those are things that we're going to do. We're going to encourage the city of Tupelo to celebrate, and we'll do a proclamation like what we just saw with the Week of Family and Pay It Forward. We're going to do a proclamation proclaiming January 9th, 2017, to be Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and really work hard on that day to have events and different activities that foster that relationship between the police officers and our community. One of the other things, the last recommendation here, during the listening tour after June 18th, during most of those, as mayor, I felt it was my job to be visible and be involved in each of those meetings, and our council members likewise were. One thing we got requested was to have the police chief or representative of the police chief involved and to conduct question and answer. So, that's something that this group has also recommended. And again, these recommendations will be, fall under the Accountability Task Force to incorporate them into our Tupelo Plan, which is our working document that we move forward under. Strategy two is to develop a Police Advisory Board. I'm not going to sugarcoat this one. This is by far the most, not necessarily controversial, but this is the one where there's the most difference of opinions. This is a proposal that for some, anything we do is too much. For some, anything we do is not enough. There appear to be as many people that don't think we should do anything as they think we should create this. So, we're trying to move forward with a strategy that while it may not be everyone's first choice, it's an acceptable choice and something that we can continue to work for, work toward, toward for the city. This committee, like many of our task forces, will consist of nine voting members. Each of our council members would have a selection, and the mayor will have two selections. The members would have to reside within the city of Tupelo, and I'll get to some more requirements in a, in a moment. There would be three non-voting members. It is contemplated that the three non-voting members, one would represent the mayor's office, one would represent the city council, and one would represent the police department. And they'd be three-year terms, and then there'd be other requirements for membership. Those are not finalized. They could be something like, you know, participating in the police, citizens' police cam or something like that. That'll be hashed out through the Accountability Task Force. Strategy three, strategy three is to review the city's hiring and training policies. The city of Tupelo, for people even that grew up in the city of Tupelo, I think how much of a melting pot we are is often lost on our, on our community. We have, in addition to Caucasian and African-American, we have a growing Latino and Hispanic population, and we also have a growing Asian population with Toyota and Yokohama Tire and the other Tier Two and Three companies. As far as the city's employment, when, when we take part-time employees, we're doing a pretty good job. So, if you take the summer part-time employees, you take the part-time employees for the school system, crossing guards, that type thing, our employees accurately reflect the demographics of the city. But when we look at, when we looked at the actual full-time employees, we're falling a little bit short. So, what we have done through our Human Resources Department, through assistance of the city attorney, and of course, oversight of the committees, making the following recommendations. To have a detailed plan to establish intentional, an intentional recruiting program within city departments with special attention to the police department, to specifically and actively recruit minority applicants for those positions; to have seminars on life skills and job development, interview classes, different educational programs that will help the applicants be successful through the interview and application process; to have a detailed marketing plan to raise the awareness. What's happening now is there's qualified people out there to apply that don't know necessarily that the job is open. When the jobs are posted or put in the paper in the classifieds, you know, that type thing, not everyone sees that. And then we'll have a detailed job appraisal to evaluate all employees under our standard job performance assessment, and hopefully, again, increase the number of minority full-time employees to better reflect the demographics of the city of Tupelo. Strategy four is to develop a neighborhood coordinator. I'm sure a lot of people in the room know or knew Mr. Darren Fenton. I know most members of the council knew him. When he was an employee at the city of Tupelo, he was virtually full-time to work on strengthening our neighborhood associations, to coordinate with each of our neighborhood associations, to listen to the citizens, to provide feedback from the city, and to coordinate when the mayor, when a councilman, when a department had needed to be at their neighborhood association meeting to discuss a particular topic. After his untimely passing for budget reasons and other reasons, that position was not filled, and his responsibilities were shifted to other employees, most recently Sherri Cochran, who recently retired. And she did a great job, a phenomenal job, but she also had many other responsibilities. We have hired, and I don't know if KC, she couldn't make it. KC Griss has been hired as a neighborhood coordinator, and her job will be to kind of do what Darren did and rebuild that constant line of communication with our neighborhood associations in the city of Tupelo, and be a liaison for each of those neighborhood associations, along with the various members of the city council. Strategy five is to engage faith-based groups. This is crucial, I think, to the success of any city. We, you know, I've said time and time again, I said at the luncheon, and we've got representatives of our public school district here. The city of Tupelo and the Tupelo Public School District are mirror images of one another, and the success of one is dependent upon the success of the other. If one succeeds, the other will succeed. If one does not, the other will not. But those students are a reflection of the community, and the community is reflected through our faith-based groups, our churches, our civic organizations, our different groups. So, it's vital that the city of Tupelo work with these faith-based groups to enhance the city of Tupelo and work with leaders to, to get them involved, so that their different faith-based leaders know what's happening in the city of Tupelo. faith-based leaders know what's happening in the city of Tupelo. This will be coordinated with the Community Outreach Coordinator, the Mayor's Outreach Task Force, and again, of course, the Accountability Task Force. The recommendations are to develop a registry of faith-based organizations so that, you know, we can make sure we're communicating with as many pastors and leaders as possible with the city, to support faith-based and community groups in their efforts to create programs aimed at community enhancement. Again, the city's not trying to get in the church business, it's not allowed under the Constitution, but the city, I think, not only is it allowed, I think it's incumbent upon good leadership is to incorporate the faith-based community in community enhancement efforts, and that's what we're trying to do there. Want to increase clergy participation on our boards and committees, and unify the city through diverse faith-based programs. The first, or the next thing this, that will be representative of the faith-based committee, getting the clergy involved in community-building events, is our Community Thanksgiving Program. That's something our Community Outreach Director will begin working on immediately, and hopefully, we can have a great diverse turnout for that event. It's been such a great event for the city of Tupelo. The sixth and final strategy is the development of a Community Outreach Coordinator or Director. This position will serve to represent the spirit of all strategies contained in this strategic plan, a catalyst to implement and support the constant work toward a more unified Tupelo. This position has been fielded, and the individual selected has begun today, and will work closely with the Office of the Mayor, with the Mayor's Outreach Task Force, with the Accountability Task Force, with the other departments in the city, and the community to create a greater bridge and a better dialogue throughout the community. My good friend of more than 25 years, Mr. Marcus Gary, is here on the front row. Proud to announce that Mr. Gary has been selected to fill this position.
Stand away, they can see.
In addition to being a graduate of Tupelo High School, Mr. Gary went on to play football at what was originally Memphis State, then the University of Memphis, and then, along with his wife, lived in Memphis, Tennessee for a number of years. During that time, Mr. Gary developed many of the skills that I think will make him such a great fit for this position. He worked in numerous community-oriented capacities or roles in Memphis, some of which earned national recognition for his ability to uplift youth and give them a forum to express themselves, to get youth off of the streets into a creative and positive environment, and do friendly competition, dance competition, artistic music, to do those type things. And some of his groups that he's worked with have been, the halftime entertainment for the Memphis Grizzlies have been, you know, television, radio, that type thing. So, they've done a great job. He also has a great business background, which is what his education is in, and he has most recently been Assistant General Manager here at the Hilton Garden Inn in Tupelo. So, I think the dynamics of being, you know, raised here in the city of Tupelo, familiar with the city of Tupelo, passionate about the city of Tupelo, having the real-world experience in creating positive, life-changing activities for our citizens, for, for young people, and particularly in the hotel business, the sensitivity to being hospitable, the sensitivity to knowing that to be successful, we have to put our best foot forward. I think that he will do a tremendous job for the city of Tupelo, and will help rebuild that trust, that, what is so vitally important. So, again, these are the, this is the recap of the report and recommendation of all six working groups. There is not a vote on any of these issues that will be presented to the city council tonight. The Advisory Board will be turned over to the Accountability Task Force, and we hope to have a proposal for the council to vote on for that topic by the end of the year. But again, I hope the council will accept this report and recommendation as part of the mayor's report, and it be so reflected in the minutes of the city of Tupelo, and hopefully, these working groups and the steps, the reports and recommendations that they have made will help us move forward with a new sense of unity, with a renewed sense of trust, and with a renewed commitment that the city of Tupelo, first and foremost, wants to do the right thing for our citizens. That will conclude the mayor's report at this time. Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Item five of the public agenda, item 5.1, Citizens Hearings. There are three citizens to speak tonight, to speak for the city council. You've got to be a resident of the city of Tupelo, own property in the city of Tupelo, and, and everyone has the right to speak in front of the city council, to speak in front of the city council by noon Thursday. Is that correct, Linda? About 5:00 Thursday prior to the city council meeting, you have to request a speak in front of the city council. So, we're going to go in order that are listed, and when your name's called, if you come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Mr. James Hall.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for just giving me this opportunity to speak. I'd like to say, first of all, in all my years as a Tupelo citizen, as a news reporter, reporting courts and law in and around Tupelo for almost 35 years, I've got to say I have not met a more honorable and professional police chief as Chief Bartigary. I think he's a fine man. Secondly, I want to recognize and commend Mayor Jason Shelton for his leadership and his sensitivity toward the issues which have arisen since the shooting death of Antoine Ronnie Shumpert on June 18th. Over the past several months, Mayor Shelton and I have disagreed on approach and even on motives, but not on desired outcome. By initiating and facilitating his plan for the six working groups, Mayor Shelton and his team clearly made their intentions known to try and implement strategies to help make Tupelo more inclusive and less divisive, and more representative of the thoughts and feelings of all Tupeloans. Mayor Shelton, I have heard it said on more than one occasion over these past four months that you have attempted to do more over these past four months to rebuild trust, repair broken relationships, and improve community relations than three of your previous five predecessors combined. Unfortunately, Mayor Shelton, you did not receive much help, support, and encouragement from the majority of the city council. Many thanks and much gratitude to council members Jennings, Davis, and Palmer for not just participating in the working groups process, but for providing active involvement, thoughtful input, and a willingness to lead by example. You showed good faith efforts to demonstrate your desire to help make Tupelo better. I personally served on one of the working groups with council members Davis and Palmer. They were content to let the conversation and exchanges take their own course, and they were supportive of our recommendations. Of course, we have several city council members who flat-out refuse to take part in the process, proof once again that when some Tupelo leaders claim that they care about the concerns of all citizens equally, they're being at best disingenuous, and at worst, grievously dishonest. It is shameful that we have a number of city council members who did not even participate in this perfectly legitimate and totally constructive process to bring different parts of the Tupelo community to make the whole better. I personally am appalled and frustrated, but not surprised that we have council members who did not support or participate in Mayor Shelton's working groups. But I'm equally confident and satisfied that they will not be able to claim credit for whatever positive outcomes result from the process and its ultimate recommendations. You claim the distinction of being leaders of an all-American city, yet you do not act, speak, or legislate as all-Americans. You apparently think it is acceptable to disrespect one-third of this city's population and disregard its concerns. I assure you, it is not. We are all all-American citizens. We deserve and demand a full complement of all-American leaders with all-American vision and all-American sensibilities. On a final note, and in that regard, for this city council to make one of its first official acts under President Brian, the unprecedented move of raising the flag, the Confederate battle flag, over a building that has never before had that flag thrown over it, a building which was built to serve and protect all Tupeloans.
I'm sorry, that's a state flag, sir.
We perceive this as your own message to a whole portion of this city, that you could care less how offensive, reprehensible, and disgusting that symbol is, and then to pretend you have equal regard for all citizens, which you have sworn to serve equally. It is tantamount to trying to make us believe that the water trickling down our collective pants legs is rain and not something else. Nothing will divide this city more than raising the Confederate battle flag over our new police headquarters. Thank you.
Excuse me. Hold on a second. Mr. James, are you? Are you finished?
I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know it was a Q and A.
No, 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 hold on a second. Mr. Hall has the floor, and nobody else is allowed to speak. Okay? And if you want to interrupt or all that, we got some gentlemen in the back that'll help you, show you outside. Okay? I apologize for your time, James, so you're right at a minute, so you can go ahead.
Okay, I was, I was, I was done. I would like to add, though, if at his first inaugural address, President Barack Obama can be called a liar, I am sure that I will not be offended because somebody decided to speak out on the time that I was given by the council. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Pastor Harold Wilson, Pastor Wilson. When you get up here, could you please state your name and your address, and you have five minutes?
Yes, sir. Pastor Harold Wilson, I live at 2202 Rosewood Street here in Tupelo, Mississippi. Thank you again for allowing me to come and have a few minutes before you. Pastor Harold Wilson, I'm a member of Coalition of Concerned Pastors and Leaders here in Tupelo. I'm an active member of the local Lee County NAACP, and also, I'm affiliated with the Full Gospel Baptist Churches of America. I'd like to urge the council to support the initiatives that have been put forth by our mayor, in particular, the community-oriented policing and the Citizens Review Board. I say that also because these organizations that I spoke of locally and nationally represent the initiatives to try to bring forth in our communities better policing and better oversight of our, our police departments. And so, it's important, I believe, that we move forward with this. I believe that Tupelo is a progressive city, and thus should continue to make progressive steps as it concerns relationships of its citizens. We all respect our police department. We know they do, do a fine job, but they are not an occupying, occupying force. They are citizens that work for us. So, I think it is important that we have good oversight from the citizens' point of view, that the procedures and practices that they put forth are advised, at least, by the citizens. I had the opportunity to work on one of the working groups, the Community Oriented Policing. I'm very satisfied how well that group went, and I look forward to seeing these things that we worked on implemented. One thing I would like to also say, that before any of these initiatives are implemented, that though the groups were diverse, though the groups did have voices throughout the community, I still think it is very important that the entire community of Tupelo be allowed to have a voice in these, what, what these initiatives are about, and have an opportunity to make suggestions and bring forth concerns. One of the top things that the mayor brought up this afternoon, of course, is trust, and of course, we know that our trust has been very much damaged because of the recent events here in our own city. So, I think by allowing the community to have input before these programs are implemented, though we know the mayor can do it with executive order, but if allowing that, that input speaks to the people that, the city leaders, the city's officials are very much concerned about their thoughts and ideas, and that I believe it would be a great step forward to continue to build this trust, because it's important that if our police officers, if our city is going to go forward in a positive, proactive way, there has to be trust among all in the community. So, I appeal to you, the city council, to get behind the mayor. I appeal to citizens of Tupelo to get behind the mayor on the initiatives, these initiatives, because these are not just local initiatives, these are national initiatives. There is much turmoil in our cities today because of the violence that is going on at the hands, unfortunately, of some police officers toward, in particular, African-Americans and people of color. And so, I think Tupelo can lead the way by supporting these initiatives, by having input from the public, so that we all can be participants of this great city of ours and have a voice that we believe is well-heard. I also like to say that Tupelo is not alone here in the region in implementing a police review board or a citizens' review board. A comparable city, Columbus, the city of my mother's home, have recently implemented a board because of the recent killing of, last year of, in the Ball case. So, I don't think that we're out of line with what the nation, what our local, our local governments, our, our sister cities are doing in order to move forward. So, again, I appeal to the city to get behind the, these two initiatives in particular, and the others as well, but also to stand together and let's help make Tupelo a better place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Pastor Wilson. Our third citizen to speak tonight is Pete Sims. Could you please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Pete Sims. I live in Belden, 5681 Hill Rouge Drive, Belden, within the city limits. I stand today before you to voice my opposition to a formation of a Police Advisory Board. I consider myself to be a conservative advocate who believes in limited government, and believes that the best government is governed as closest to and accountable to the people. I believe strongly in supporting our institutions and departments of government as long as they meet or exceed the expectations of our elected leaders. I also firmly believe in holding our elected leaders accountable and to effectively running the city departments. The Tupelo Police Department is being portrayed by some groups within our city as being untrustworthy and incapable of functioning properly without outside oversight. These same feelings of non-support for our police officers are being projected by our mayor and some members of the city council, and I want you to know that I support the police department 110 percent. I have full faith and confidence in Mayor Shelton's ability and you as a city council to provide proper oversight and be accountable for the, to the citizens of Tupelo for the operation of the Tupelo Police Department. I firmly believe- I firmly believe an unelected and unaccountable group of citizens is not the answer. When there are problems within the Tupelo, when there are problems within the Tupelo Police Department, I expect Chief Gary and his leadership team to promptly and appropriately address them. If Chief Gary is unable to do so, I fully expect our elected city leaders to take immediate action and place someone in authority who can provide the leadership to take care of the problems that have been identified. I'm here tonight to tell you, there is absolutely no fact-based need for a police advisory board. Here are some of the facts to support this claim. In the past three years, there have been only 27 formal complaints out of more than 250,000, more than a quarter million calls for service. That is .000107 percent, a number so small that I can't verbalize the percentage. There's been less than one formal complaint every month. And I won't go through the other statistics. But police advisory boards, accountability boards are not common in the South. There is absolutely, the closest place I can find to a review board or accountability board is in Memphis and Atlanta, which are both cities that are run by liberal Democratic administrations. Since there's no fact-based need for a, since there's no fact-based need for a police advisory board, then what is it? There is a political need. A political need on the part of liberal Democratic mayor and some members of the city council to appease and placate groups and individuals within the city who make demands and appear to embrace civil unrest, economic boycotts, and filing multimillion-dollar lawsuits, including, not including, what appears to be a frivolous lawsuit regarding the mayor for defamation of character. Politics is where the idea for the police advisory board originated, with these working groups. Make no mistake, the mayor is supportive of and should own these recommendations. I will let you draw your own conclusions of why he feels such a board is necessary. I would suspect the reason is rather easy to understand. You consider the mayor is a liberal Democrat, and his largest single voting block that helped put him in office is made up of members of the African-American community, whose elected and self-appointed leaders are pressuring him to do something about the Tupelo Police Department related to the death of Ronnie Shumpert. So where do we go from here? The mayor is basically, he's finding himself between a rock and a hard place.
Thirty seconds.
He's got the left and the right pulling on him now, and he finds himself pleasing no one. Not his left-wing base, who he's counting on to help him get reelected next year, or conservatives who recognize what is going on and want no part of it. The question for the city council, will you approve a police advisory board that is not supported by the facts? I urge you to demonstrate your support for the police department by standing in firm opposition to the police advisory board. Thank you very much.
Item six, the action agenda. Do I have a motion to, item six, point Ron? Do I have a motion to review, adopt amendment to code of ordinance regarding mowing of private properties determined via minutes to public health, safety, and welfare?
I move that we second the motion.
I have a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
This is essentially amending the lot mowing ordinance. In the ordinance it has, when the public works or whoever mows the lots, that it should be mowed to five inches. It changes that to nine inches, which is easier to do.
We had a discussion by the council. All in favor? The motion carries. Item seven, the routine agenda. Item 7.1, review and approve minutes of regular city council meeting of Tuesday, October the 18th, 2016.
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Brown. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, that was Buddy Palmer. My hearing is as bad as he is. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.2, review and approve reject advertising and promotion expenses.
I move that we would approve advertising and promotion expenses.
Second. I have a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Willie Jennings. Mayor?
Thank you, President Brian. These are six different expenditures from various departments for advertising, parking recreation, retirement, real men's stand-up, the aquatic center, and the police department. They're all budgeted items within each respective department's advertising budget.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.3, review and pay the bills.
Make a motion we pay the bills.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Buddy Palmer, and the bills are to be paid by Buddy Palmer, Travis Beard, and myself. All in favor, pay the bills? Motion carries. Item 7.4, review and approve Day Bright change order.
I move that we approve this Day Bright change order.
Second. I have a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Mike Brown. Mayor?
Thank you, President Brian. This is a continuation of the ongoing Day Bright Roofing Project, which is a community development block grant from the Mississippi Development Authority. This change order is $35,000, but will be paid by Day Bright, so there is no cost to the taxpayers of the city of Tupelo for this work.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.5, review and approve amended engineering agreement for Day Bright.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mike Brown and a second by Markel Whittington. Mayor, I'm assuming this is just the engineering contract that's up for the previous item?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's correct. Any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.6, review and approve or approve a Mississippi Forestry Commission grant contract for an urban forest challenge grant.
I move that we accept the urban forestry grant by the Mississippi Forestry Commission.
Second. I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Mike Brown. Mayor?
Thank you, President Brian. This is, as stated, Mississippi Forestry Commission Urban Forest Challenge Grant. It's in the amount of $5,500. It is for a web-based tree inventory management system that's utilized as part of the tree management program that was developed in response to the 2014 tornado. There is a one-to-one match, but the city of Tupelo, through our Public Works Department, will meet that match through planting trees from the Tupelo Tree Farm on city right-of-ways.
Any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.7, review, approve matching grant agreement between Mississippi Transportation Commission, the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, and the Tupelo Airport Authority.
I move that we would approve the matching grant.
I have a motion by Nettie Davis. Second. A second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
Thank you, President Brian. This is an ongoing project at the airport for improvements. The amount of the, that will be spent by the Airport Authority is $25,775. This expense will be incurred by the Airport Authority and not the general fund of the city of Tupelo.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.8, review, approve resolutions authorizing transfer of 25 trees from the city of Tupelo to the city of Lewisville.
I move we approve this resolution.
Second. I've got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Willie Jennings. Mayor?
Thank you. This is, as you know, not only was Lewisville hit by the same tornado storm system that we were hit by on April 28, 2014, they lost many or several of their citizens in effort to help them with their ongoing reforesting campaign. We have, we think it'd be prudent to gift them 25 trees to help them with that purpose. Of course, we have our award-winning tree farm here in the city of Tupelo, and their parking, excuse me, Public Works has assured there's still plenty of trees there to meet the city of Tupelo's needs.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.9, review, approve sole source purchase for Tupelo Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. President, I would approve the, make a motion to approve the sole source of purchase for Tupelo Park and Recreation Department.
I have a motion by Willie Jennings and a second, Mike Brown, I'm sorry, Markel Whittington. Mayor?
Thank you. This is a request for sole source purchasing because this is the only company that can produce the rain skirt needed for the air structure. So it's the only thing available to, you know, custom-built to match the existing building. So it's the only thing available.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.10, review, accept donation of funds to Tupelo Park and Recreation Department from Super Sagless.
Make a motion we accept the funds.
Second. I've got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Willie Jennings. Mayor?
Super Sagless has graciously and kindly offered to donate the sum of $1,500 to the Tupelo Park and Rec, Tupelo Parks and Recreation Department to be used for trees that there in Nichols Park in South Tupelo to help start a beautification program at that park.
Mr. President, I'd just like to interrate on that. I appreciate Super Sagless doing that. I hope most citizens of Tupelo are using that park because we, once we get the center built, we've got the splash pad out there, and the trees growing and everything, it's going to be a beautiful park. So I'm encouraging everyone to use that park because we're spending a lot of your tax dollars into that park. So I'm actually encouraging you to use it, especially come next spring, next summer, that we'll be able to get a full summer out of the splash pad. So I was the first one to get under that water. It was great. That was a struggle to get, but it was worth it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.11, review, approve proclamation declaring additional holidays for city employees.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mike Brown and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
Just for the benefit of the folks here and anybody watching at home, the city of Tupelo and every municipality in the state of Mississippi can only close by order of proclamation, you know, emergency situations such as tornado, snowstorm, you know, some type of emergency situation, or when the state of Mississippi also closes its government offices through order of the governor. The governor has issued a proclamation for Thanksgiving that state offices would be closed November 24th, Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, November 24th, and the following Friday, November 25th, and then for Christmas, which is on a Sunday, of course, December 25th, the following Monday, which is December 26th, and then New Year's Day, which is on a Sunday, to also close on Monday, January 2nd. So the request from the administration is that the city of Tupelo likewise closes its offices on those days. But again, we do not have the authority to add additional days, such as the Friday before or the Tuesday after.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.12, review, accept minutes of the Tupelo Coliseum Commission meeting of September the 12th, 2016.
I move to accept the minutes of the Tupelo Coliseum Commission.
Second. I've got a motion by Mike Brown and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.13, review, ratify contract for Ramada and Asbestos Subatement Project.
Make a motion we ratify the contract.
Second. I've got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Brown. Mayor?
The council has previously authorized the administration to enter into this contract. This is asking the council to ratify that executed contract, which would result in a proceed-to-work order from our city engineer, John Crowley. They would have, I believe, 45 days, or 45? 45 days to complete the work of getting the asbestos removed. In the meantime, we will begin the bid process for the actual demolition. What we plan on doing for the benefit of the council and the city is provide two options. One, simply demolishing the building, and then two, an alternate to have a clean slate to remove the foundation, the pad, and everything else. So that bid process will begin and should be ready to start in, as soon as January, once asbestos and environmental concerns are alleviated.
Any more discussion?
I have some other comments. I'm happy that we've finally come into the state where we can remove this building from the property. It's in my ward, and it's been a lot of complaints about this unattractive dwelling, building, and I'm so happy that we finally have come to almost a time when we can have it demolished.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.14, review, accept minutes Tupelo Major Thoroughfare Program meeting of September the 12th, 2016.
So moved.
Second. I've got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by, is that wrong? Yeah, Buddy Palmer and Travis Beard. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.15, Mr. Whittington, could you read here? You can read that.
I make a motion that we accept the contract with Neil Schaefer Incorporated for Main Street Traffic Signal Optimization Study, and authorize the mayor to enter into negotiation regarding the same with ratification to follow at a later date.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Brown. Mayor?
Thank you for the motion. The negotiation would be to allow the experts at Water and Light to help negotiate a potential contract. Signalization is part of the next phase of Major Thoroughfare Program and part of ongoing improvements at the city of Tupelo. This contract will be for Main Street. MDOT is doing a similar study for Gloucester Street, so hopefully the result of both studies will be better traffic flow for the city of Tupelo.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.16, review, approve list of items to be declared surplus by Tupelo Water and Light Department.
I move that we accept the list of surplus items.
Second motion. I've got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Nettie Davis. Mayor?
Thank you. The items there that are surplus are a radio that was located in a truck that was stolen. The truck was recovered, but the radio was not. And then the hydraulic crimper was somehow damaged. They sent it back to the company, and it could not be fixed.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.17, review, award, reject bid for Tupelo Water and Light Department.
Make a motion we award the bid.
Second. I've got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Timmons of Water and Light has provided the information. Mr. Timmons at Water and Light has provided the information on this bid. This is the lowest and best bid. The total amount of the bid is $68,378.86. This is for, by Wesco Distribution. This is for Underground Utilities for the ongoing West Jackson Street revitalization project.
Any more discussion?
Is that, that particular money, is that coming out of the loan that we?
I think this is regular, their regular budget, Tupelo Water and Light.
Oh, okay.
Now, I believe that Mr. Jennings at Water and Light builds NDC for that work that they're doing.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Review and approve, item 7.18, review, approve order establishing policy for display of flag, state flag at city facilities. So move. Second. I've got a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Buddy Palmer. We'll start discussion on your end.
Mr. President, I would like to make amends. I would like to amend the motion to the, do I need to do it after discussion or before the discussion?
Well, I guess if you, what's the, what do we do here?
The motion to amend would be made during the discussion of the main motion, which has been open now, and so you can state your motion to amend, and then if there is a second, then you will debate the motion to amend.
So I can do that now?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move to amend section one to add exception for, except for the new police facility, which will display the American flag, the police flag, and the city of Tupelo flag.
And second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Jennings to amend section one to state that the, is that correct? Section one? Mr. Jennings' motion, which was seconded by Ms. Jennings, moves to amend section one.
Ms. Davis.
I mean, Ms. Davis, I'm sorry.
My wife, please forgive.
To amend section one to add except for the new police facility, which will display the American flag, the police flag, and the city of Tupelo flag. The amendment has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Hi. Yeah, I would like to.
Let me do a second.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we've already read a second.
Okay. On this, I've pondered about this. I lost sleep over this. And I was trying to, I'm a, I'm a person trying to solve problems as best for everybody. I'm not just a person trying to solve a person, a flag just for one particular group or whatever. I'm, I'll try to look for solutions that's gonna benefit the whole city of Tupelo, and this is, I came up with several different things, and I finally came up with this and I asked Ben, would this be okay? That I could present this? And so, to my colleagues, because we're the ones going to have to vote on this, please consider this. Because I know we have different opinions and all this, but we can change what happened in the city of Tupelo. The thing that, that come before us, we can either make it better or we can make it worse. And I feel like this is, can be one of those things that would be better for the city because the mayor just read six different plans, and I'm hoping that there don't be six plans that'll be on the shelf that we'll be dusting off 20 years from now. So we have had many plans over, over the last 20 years, and they just been still sitting on the shelf. So all of this comes down to this flag. The police department didn't have a flag flying before, or didn't have that flag flying before. See, I respect the flag and its contents, that other people's opinion about it, how they feel about it. I was gonna suggest putting it at the ballot park, because that's where a lot of the different flags are flying. So I don't wanna just say, you know, the heck with it, no. So I was gonna be one of my suggestions. But when this came up and thrown in my lap at the last, at the last minute of yesterday evening, and we building a $10 million facility fixing to move into, and that's tax hard-earned money that we gonna have to pay for, for a long time. And that quarter is, is the heart of coming into the city of Tupelo and is basically sitting in, in a black community. And my, and my church is just, I can stand in front of my church and look across that flag. Like I said, I would wish my colleague would consider everybody's feelings because it do offend me. It, it offends me a lot. I was looking at my eight-month-old grandbaby last night, and I said, here it is. I'm trying to make a difference in his life and other kids, this babies that's gonna be coming on, they're gonna have to fight the same battle when he grows up or she grows up or anybody's child grow up. So we can change that. It's not about me, it's not about my colleagues, it's about what's best for the future of this city. And we just, I saw the symbol of All-American, and I was one of participants in the last two of winning the 2000 All-American, and I put my heart and soul into that. But I cannot continue to call it an All-American city when we don't wanna face the hard challenge that's facing us as we go forward. And this is something, it ain't, it's about the little, behind that flag, it offends a lot of people. And we as Christian people say, when it offends your brother that much, you should consider that real hard, I don't know the scripture on that, but you should think about it very hard and, and do something about it for the good. Ain't no way in the world I can set up on Sunday and if that was reversed around and vote to put a flag up when we are trying to tell the police, when we are trying to show the police and the public that trust. And then we gonna put the flag up there that stands in the way of that trust. Now, I can't, I can't, that's why I've been losing so much sleep about it, and why I say you just gotta, you just gotta let these things go because it's gonna make you sick. See, you can be compassionate and still make good decisions. That's what's wrong with this world, they feel like if you get into politics, you can't be compassionate. If we can't be compassionate, then I can't dedicate nothing to Christ. Christ was, Jesus went to the cross, had all the power in his hand, and he took this for us, and here we is diminishing about still shaming his name, but we don't wanna, we don't, we don't wanna offend other people. We are offending other people. I don't care when, if, if it was offending another race of the Latino group or the Mexican group or whatever, I would feel the same way because nobody deserves that. Until we, until we start standing up as councilmen and leaders, all these other six plans really not gonna be effective, not in my eyes. They really not, they're not gonna be effective. But we got, we got a chance to show, and I am tired of trying to prove myself to other people. I've been taking, I've been taking too much, too long trying to measure up and please other people. It's time for other people to give and prove to me that they mean what they say. And until, until that flag come down, in this case, we trying to put one up and never been there. So this is a separate issue of what, we talking about taking the flag down in other places. This flag don't have to be there. That's why I made the amendment to put the American flag, which is the United States, you can imagine, we talking about cleaning up things in Tupelo, you can imagine if we just have one flag. Forget about Tupelo flag and police flag, we have one American flag to stand up there that represent our soul. That would be what we need to do. But I'm making a compromise to put the Tupelo flag and the police department flag, which I respect, and the United States flag, which I respect, I respect the other flag, and that's why I made the recommendation to fly it at the Veterans Park because it's a Veterans Park, you got different flags there. We gonna have a beautiful veteran wall being built there, we'll have different people's names on it, what they stood for. So we can be stubborn if we want to and think things gonna go away or they're not gonna go away. If you value my friendship and you care that you respect me, I would like for it to be shown. Because I'm 64-years-old and I'm very tired. I don't wanna spend the next 20 years, I hope I have a good mind, trying to see if anybody gonna prove anything to me because I'm, I'm not gonna tired trying to prove things to other people. So that's all I have to say on that.
Ms. Davis?
I have a speech I've written, and I was gonna make it, make it before the amendment was presented, but I think I will make it now. And it may be lengthy, but this is what I feel. To my fellow councilmen, the mayor, and administration, and citizens of Tupelo, I never thought that I would have to discuss, may, make a decision on something that I feel like shouldn't even be an issue in our city. As I travel throughout this state, other cities across the United States, I brag, I have bragged and boasted about Tupelo because it's my hometown. We are dealing with an issue that none of us should, present here tonight, have, have, have not even, don't even know anything about other than the history of it. Living in this city, or counter even in this state, has, state has been, we have not experienced what happened during the Civil War. A design assembly that was placed on a flag representing Mississippi was done several centuries ago. This flag was designed and hung during the Civil War. We were not even born at that time. The young people of today do not even know much about segregation. Our mayor did not grow up in a segregated society, so he has not even had to experience this. Our heritage is important, but some of the things that happened years ago, we are not happy about. More than three-fifths of more of the population in our city do not support putting the flag, hanging the flag because we are supposed to be an inclusive city. Many of my schoolmates and classmates left Mississippi in their late teens because of the bad experiences in segregation. I chose to leave to go to college, but I returned, returned to Tupelo to help our city be what it is today. Here we are in 2016, centuries later, dealing with a negative issue that should not even exist. We are considered a leading city in economic development, educational advancement, of high top quality of life, and outstanding tourism in, in this area. If you do research, all of us have had relatives who were a part of the Civil War. Blacks and whites sitting here tonight have forefathers, whether we selected them or not, who lived during this time. This was a time of slavery. Slavery exemplified hate, turmoil, disrespect, and intrusion, divisiveness, and disrespect for the black man. My grandfather and his three brothers had a slave owner who was, was their father. And my great-grandmother worked in, in the house of the plantation owner and raised his children by the slave owner. My other grandmother's parents were slaves, and they had children by the plantation owner. All of the, this means, all of these things related to slavery are derogatory and happened during the Civil War. I could be bitter for my great-great-grandmother on both sides of my family being treated this way. But God has shown many of us the way to forgiveness. I didn't experience this, but my relatives and forefathers did. I know that there are many citizens in this city who do not approve of anything that brings about hate, malice, and despairment in, in this city. Because we are beyond that. We are too good for that. To keep dealing with the flag issue is distasteful, insulting, and embarrassing. To hang this flag in the historically black community is very embarrassing. Front Street is a part of the Shake Reg area where many of us resided in growing up. I cannot think of voting for the state flag to hang in an area that is a part of the main artery entering the downtown area of Tupelo, the All-American City, where visitors from out of town enter and go downtown and pass by this new building. I know this is a hard decision for us to make, but please think of the hurt that many of your sisters and brothers are experiencing here tonight from viewing a flag that is symbolic of hate and divisiveness. I know that what the, what the vote will be, but I must vote for what's best for my city, my community, and my neighborhood. I will vote against any flag that will be hung that creates hate and despair, mis, despairment. I will vote tonight against 7:18, including hanging of the flag at a, at, hanging of the flag at a state-of-the-art police department in the city of Tupelo.
Okay, is there any more? Is there any more discussion on item seven, on the amendment to the original motion, item 7.18? All in favor of Mr. Jennings' amendment? Raise your hand. All opposing? Mr. Jennings' amendment fails. Is there any discussion, more discussion on item 7.18, the order establishing policy for display of state flag at city facilities?
I always like to explain the reason why I voted the way I do, and this has been, been thinking about this quite a bit, and I do appreciate my colleagues. I do understand their position, I really do, and this, and you know I do. But there, there's three different groups of people about the flag. There are those who totally oppose it, and we have those who look at it differently, and none of that's debatable, whether it be the history or some of their people that fought in the Civil War, whatever it is. But there's also a third group. There's another group that would like to see a change. Taking a flag down, in my opinion, doesn't accomplish anything. I think we need to get after our, our local representatives, do whatever we can to change this flag, our Mississippi state flag, to something that, that is more inclusive of all of our people in, in the great state of Mississippi. That being said, I, I, I believe, when I put my hand on the Bible, and I, I had an interview yesterday, that I would support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Mississippi. To me, whether or not anyone else agrees with me or not, that also includes the flag, the flag of great state of Mississippi and the United States flag. Therefore, I will not, I cannot accept anything to take our state flag until it's removed from our state Capitol. And perhaps that may need to be done, and maybe it needs to be replaced. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, Mr. President. I support the state flag. I believe that it's the duty of elected officials to support the state flag. Municipalities and county governments should fly the state flag. Municipalities and county governments should fly the state flag. Like Mr. Palmer stated, when I took the OFA office, I feel like that following the Constitution of the State of Mississippi, that I should support flying the flag. If anyone wants to change that flag, they need to go to Jackson, to the lawmakers that can actually make the change. If the current flag is ever changed by the state, then I will support bringing this flag down and raising the new one.
Mr. Whitton?
I got just one comment, or maybe two. Buddy said he could understand Willie and Eddie's position, I cannot. I've never been in their shoes, I hadn't walked where they walk and I hadn't seen things affecting them, I've seen things affecting me. I, I am, I do believe the state flag is divisive. I do think it needs to be changed, but I do think I should support it as long as it is our state flag. And, and the police department location, I think the new police department is a department for the entire city of Tupelo. The location is the location that was given to it and it, it represents all of Tupelo. I certainly feel for Nettie and Willie because I, I can't feel what they feel, but I know their feelings are true, so I just wanted to say that.
I have, I have come in. You know, that's one of the things you learn when you listen to folks, you feel, you understand where they come from. You know, my speech and the, and the previous was, like I said, it wasn't about me. If it was just me, I could help. I know, even though I be defendant, I could just help. Yeah, I sworn to uphold the Constitution, but ain't nothing that said we can't change that flag and make changes. That's why I gave, that's why I recommend, in the recommendation, I'll do it again. The, it wasn't a flag there in the beginning. So we putting up a flag. So it ain't like we moving this flag now, we ain't talking about this flag right now because it's already up. We talking about one that's not up and ain't been there. It wasn't there before they moved out to the airport. The only reason is that now because you got three flag pole, poles, and if we feel like we got to put three flags, I'm in favor of taking two poles down. Because I still say we need one flag at the police department. And then I made the compromise that we can leave the flag at Veterans Park. It doesn't matter where you get, one or 50, so I made, I was trying to reach out and say, compromise, give and take, that's what, that's what the American, that's what Americans do, give and take. No one side, always get everything. And that's all we asking. I mean, I, I feel like the people sitting at Tupelo would agree with that. Compromise leaving it at Veterans Park because otherwise it wouldn't be a Veterans Park. And like I said, I respect what the flag stands for, for the people that, that's what they believe in. I used to say just take the flag down and head with, see, the Lord changed my mind on it. But he also give us wisdom and knowledge to reason with each other. In this case, we are not reasoning, there's always going to be one side win and one side lose. But in this case, it's going to hurt people and it's going to affect people's minds, it's going to affect people coming together and love. I, I just, Lord mercy, I just can't see it, I just can't see it. And we feel like we, we say we send it to the legislature and let them do it, if you feel like sending the legislature and let them do it, that mean you want to take it down. So why can't we just help them alone and do what needs to be done? Because it, I don't care what you send, we can send a minute resolution that, that we can send down now, that have made their stand. If he, if he sent it for changing the flag, ain't no way in heck that they going to change another flag and, and not put something similar to what's already on there. It ain't going to happen. If I was, if I felt that way, I wouldn't want to change the flag and, and just wipe it all up. So if we waiting on that, that just, me as a cop out to hide behind something. I respect y'all, I, I really do, I respect, I really do, I really do. But when, when, when people disrespect me, I cannot be their friend. I, you could be my colleague, but that's far as it go. Because this offend me to the court. And I'm telling you that publicly, I told the police department on many occasions, I support them 100% as long as they don't abuse their authority. And I still stand behind that. If we got a rotten apple in the trunk, what you do with a rotten apple, you tuck it out. So that's my stance on that, guys. I mean, if, if that's the way y'all want to play it, then I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's what this city stands, it's stand divided.
Any more discussion?
President Bryan? Have a statement. I don't usually do prepared remarks, but I thought it appropriate on this occasion. As a seventh generation Mississippian, I'm proud to call our state and this great city home. I regret that we continue to struggle with the issue of our state flag. It is beyond debate that the flag of the State of Mississippi is offensive to an overwhelming majority of more than a third of the population of our state and of our city. The mere fact that we continue to have this debate proves the divisiveness of our flag. Our Chamber of Commerce and virtually every economic and professional organization has said that the current flag is not good for economic development or business development in the state of Mississippi. Every major university and most trade groups have said that the flag needs to be changed. The NCAA will not schedule events, certain events in the state of Mississippi because of the flag. Scores of state leaders have called for a new flag. Our Community Development Foundation, which is consistently ranked in the top 10 nationally, has called for a new flag since 2001. Here in Tupelo, around 15 years ago, one of our greatest business leaders, Jack Reed Senior, sent on a commission with former Governor William Winner to attempt to change the flag. Today, with this resolution, our city is missing an opportunity to lead in the state, to lead in economic development and to lead in unification. That the state flag will soon fly over police headquarters on the edge of a historically African-American neighborhood will be taken as an insult by a large portion of that community, even though I know that it is not the intent of our council to do so with this resolution. Saying that, it is the prerogative of this council to set the policy for the city. The property of the city of Tupelo is owned by the people of Tupelo who act through their elected council members who represent them. It is the mayor's duty as chief executive officer to put into action the policy of the city council and to run the day-to-day operations of the city. That is how our government is established by charter and it is what is mandated by law. It is my hope and my prayer that we learn from this issue that divides us and come together in the future for meaningful change as our state leaders ponder their responses to this issue. As we all know, this issue will never go away. In the spirit of unity, I hope that this council in the future will consider a resolution requesting the state legislature to adopt a new flag which is representative of all of our citizens. Thank you.
All right. At this time, if there's no more discussion, all in favor of the order, raise your hand. All opposed? We have a vote of five, four and two against and the motion carries. Item 7.19, review, approve, request for international travel for the mayor.
I move that we would approve the request.
I have a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard, Mayor Shelton.
Thank you, President Bryan. This is an invitation by the Mississippi Development Authority. The governor has worked diligently over his term to improve and create business relationships with the nation of Israel and the state of Mississippi. That is something, the support of that is something that I wholeheartedly support. The request is to join the governor, representatives of the Mississippi Development Authority and the state legislature, as well as other leaders on this business development mission. The trip is from November 27th to December 1st. No expenses of this will be out of the general fund of the city of Tupelo, including my travel or the administration travel budget. The travel expenses will be covered through the Convention and Visitors Bureau as we hope to engage in tourism-related activities, travel-related activities while we're there. Would respectfully request approval of this travel at this time and assuming that it's approved, will soon appoint acting mayors in according to state law.
Any discussion on the mayor's travel? All in favor? The motion carries. The next item is, is the approval of EFLAP, A-E-F-L-A-P grant application. And it's actually in two separate parts because we're going to submit it as two separate, two separate grants. So, Mr. Whittington, could you read the motion or make the motion on 7.20A?
Yes, I make a motion, we approve the request to submit application for federal funds under the EFLAP program for the Natchez Trails Project and choose option two.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second, what was that, Mr. Bryan, Mike Bryan. And if the council will recall, option two was a 21% match grant which added an additional five allocation points to the grading of the application. If we went for the next higher option, it was $210,000 just to get five additional points and we feel that that was the best option. Is there any more discussion? Or any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Mr. Whittington, 7.20B.
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the request to submit applications for federal funds under the EFLAP program from Elizabeth Street to private John Allen National Fish Hatchery Project, option number two.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Whittington and a second by Mr. Mike Bryan. Again, we're recommending option two, a 21% match fund to get the five additional point allocations, which was $250,000, $250,000 more to get a 31%, which only gets us a few extra allocation points. Any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. There are no items on the study agenda. Mr. Logan, do we need to determine a need for executive session?
We do not, President Bryan.
With no need for executive session, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Willie Jennings and a second by Buddy Palmer, all in favor? City councils adjourn.